Welcome to the first meeting of the Montpelier Roxbury Second Annual Year, I guess.
Yeah.
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 And I will now take nominations for the board chair positions.
I nominate Jim Murphy.
I'll second.
All, any discussion on that?
Jim, thank you so much. You're doing a great job.
Ditto.
Thank you.
I feel like we had this discussion last time, right? We've made enough praise on Jim.
All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I hereby appoint Jim as the board chair.
Thank you all, and congratulations to Andrew, and congratulations to Steve.
And Lisa.
And Lisa.
Oh, that's right, and Lisa too.
Bye-bye.
Did you get sworn in, or are you official?
Didn't get the information in time.
Unofficial.
I could have done my homework, but...
I don't think we're gonna have any close votes that...
Yeah.
Yeah. Yeah, we're not elected.
Huh?
For next week, next time.
Yeah.
I'll do it tomorrow.
I think Steve's still in Mexico, so he's probably, we do have...
You can do it by phone, though.
Huh?
You can do it by phone. I don't know if you have to be in Vermont or not, but I had, I did have to ra- I did it by phone because I was gonna walk over. And I was told I can do it by phone, but I did need to raise my right hand in the air and double check to make sure that my right hand is raised with the...
Did you like face time it?
John said that, John said he doesn't have to do it.
No, I didn't do it over the phone. It's like, we can actually do it over the phone, but you just, you need to raise your right hand. He's like, really? It better be raised right.
And it doesn't have to be John Odom that does it. He told me it could be, I think, Justice of the Peace.
This is all good information for us for next year.
Has to be recorded, though.
Yeah.
Okay.
Excellent.
You have, you have to sign a book, too.
He signed it.
Okay.
Great. So a little short staffed, does that mean...
There's enough.
Six of us.
Yeah. I'm wondering, can we elect Lisa Clerk?
Probably not until she's officially sworn in.
Well, let's, let's do it twice.
Okay.
There you go.
So your first selection of officers, or... Let's see, I have a public comment. And maybe we have one member of the public. So, nominations for vice chair.
I nominate Bridgette if she wants to do it again.
Sure.
And I'll second that.
Any discussion?
Thank you, Bridgette. Anytime.
You might not want to say "anytime."
One more year.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Parliamentarian.
I'll nominate Ryan. I'll second that.
Any discussion?
Yeah, what is the parliamentarian?
He has Robert's rules in his back pocket.
Oh, okay. Yeah.
Supposed to tell us if we go astray.
Yeah, if the board chair has any questions about how to proceed with things, we can talk about things before the meeting, and it's just a general, making sure that we are following...
Process.
Yes.
Great.
Perfect.
Thank you, Ryan. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? And Clerk?
Is that currently Becky?
It's me.
Lisa.
Lisa.
Okay. Becky was treasurer before, and now we don't have one.
I will nominate Lisa for Clerk.
Okay.
Second?
All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
We'll do it again.
And we'll do it again.
Thank you.
Well, at least we'll... Do we just want to ask Pietro quickly if we need to do it again?
It takes 30 seconds to do again, too.
Which is cheaper. Pietro has 30 seconds.
So, in the, on the ballot, there was a place for moderator, and there wasn't anyone. Previously, we had Paul Giuliani, and all I recall him doing is what Libby just did, called the meeting to order and caused the election of the chair. Is there any other job for the moderator?
Yeah, thanks for the conversation, because I noticed that too, and I was gonna bring it up, and then I forgot about it. Do we have a problem that we do not have a moderator, although I...
I think it's statutory requirement.
I think we have to have it by statute.
It's only if we are ever to have a district meeting, we would have to have the moderator. But I don't think there's really any reason that we would need to have a district meeting.
Well, I wonder if you could clarify with John whether we have a moderator.
Jim, Andrew wrote somebody in.
I wrote somebody in, too.
Actually, it's my time.
So we should see, we might have written in the same person.
You might have a moderator.
So, so we should check in, we should check in with...
Oh, nice. This is nice.
Yeah, it's got you in public.
Saying, hey, she did my job!
We should check in with the Montpelier Clerk's office.
Right. I think there's a minimum number of votes you have to...
You have to have the number of petitions...
Would two votes be enough?
No.
It wasn't a coordinated campaign.
The number that you have to have to be on, to petition yourself to be on the ballot, you have to have that threshold.
What is that?
So you have to have 20.
So it's gonna be like 30 or 40 now.
So when you had to get a certain number of petitions to get on the ballot, it's that same number to be written in.
So my guess is there is some...
I think we don't have a moderator.
Thirty of your best friends didn't do the same thing you did.
No.
That might be a question for Pietro.
Yep.
How do you know?
Whether we need a moderator, and if we...
And to have our act together to ensure that we don't find ourselves in this embarrassing pickle next year.
It's not that either.
But just appoint somebody?
It's not, it's not the most aggressive...
Yeah, now you can appoint somebody.
No.
Of all the jobs to not have somebody?
Right.
The moderator is probably...
No, Jim, we've been through several consecutive dumpster fires. That does not, I didn't use that language at all.
Yeah, this is, this is low on the list of embarrassing pickles. Okay, so I will reach out to Pietro and find out, and then we can, we can appoint someone. I think that's all the positions we do not have. We have a treasurer elected by, maybe we did have a candidate there. I think we're done. Thank you all, and welcome new old members.
Jim, do we need to appoint members to the standing committees?
Well, that's a question we probably do.
I hadn't thought about that until we started this process, but I think we're supposed to appoint members to the standing committees. So the budget committee, Finance, Policy, and Superintendent Valuation Committees.
And Negotiations.
That is the good point of order, parliamentarians.
It's very kind of...
Because we had said even, we weren't, especially, if we weren't in negotiations, we couldn't do anything. So, but it is a standing, because we always have at some point in time.
I have Budget, Fin- No, Budget, Finance is one.
Budget, Finance, yeah.
Negotiation, Policy, Superintendent Valuation.
Are we going to main meeting Policy Committee permanently?
I said that.
I'm sorry.
That's okay. Or maybe I didn't say it.
We had Transportation Committee, but I don't think we need to reappoint the Transportation Committee.
I think we had said we would, because there would be revision and monitoring, and in the future, it wouldn't be as intensive as right now, but the goal would be that the Policy Committee would, if nothing else, just be doing some record-keeping and, shall we say, weeding and refreshing.
As a point of process, are we able to do a blanket?
That's what I was wondering.
Yeah, proposal of reappointing all of the same members who were on those committees to them in one vote.
That sounds like...
I believe so. As long as everybody knows what we're voting on, yes.
So, I motion that we reappoint all of the members who were on the standing committees prior to town meeting day to those same committees post-town meeting day.
Second.
Second, but can I make a discussion point?
Sure.
The reason it popped into my mind is because when we were talking on Superintendent Valuation Committee at our last meeting, we had talked about Tina.
We did, so she's on.
Okay. So that is, yes, we're all clear then?
So she's included in this vote.
The Superintendent Valuation Committee.
So we have a second?
I do.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Excellent. So I think we are reorganized. And Libby and I will make a note to reappoint the Clerk. I wonder if we need to reappoint the... Maybe we can just do a blank motion, reappointing Lisa to everything she's been appointed to?
Yeah.
Okay. Because she's on some committees, too.
I think you can appoint her. She just can't talk, or she can't vote on anything.
Yeah. Well, we'll just, we'll just do a blanket one. My guess is that it will get called into question. So, public comment? Great. So, the consent agenda. Do you have a motion to approve the consent?
Actually, Jim, can we just, can we just pull the bond capital plan bid?
Yep.
Just for the sake of getting an overview on the scope, and I don't anticipate that will take very long, but... Yeah, I don't know if I prefer you, but maybe just pull that in after the little focus right there, since we'll be here, so that that... That's, so that's my motion, is to pull that.
So, consent agenda, would that, that item able to hold?
I move that we approve the consent agenda, with the exception of the approval of bond and capital plan bid by you.
Second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Good, and then Andrew, you wanna... The other Andrew, probably the best person to answer that. You wanna?
Sure, sure. So, the first thing we can go over is the actual approval of the bids. We had three bidders, Spades Construction, Russell Construction, and EF Wall. You'll notice that we have pretty good bid results, pretty tight, which is always encouraging on a set of drawings. You'll also notice that we, we did not go with the low bidder. We went, because we were within 1% of bid results, we had by statute the ability to pick between two contractors. In the end, we went with EF Wall for one primary reason, in that as we, when we put together the bid documents, we had a base bid scope, which we'll go over, and then we had alternates. They were fundamentally add-alternates. We had a couple of delete alternates that were kind of a doomsday. If the bids were way over budget, we could at least take that deduct, get the project rolling, and kind of figure things out. We didn't want to be in the position we were with the playground last year, trying to figure out things on the fly. Wasting, wasting time, eating up time. But fortunately, the bids came in, we were able, they were under our target budget, and when we put those adds back in, which I'll discuss in a moment, there's also not only the fi- the cost of those adds, but schedule. And EF Wall was able to accommodate all our adds without adding any time to our schedule. Our schedule is such that we will begin, haven't had this conversation with the contractors specifically yet, but the bid documents and the expectation is that April break, we're actually gonna start ripping and tearing here at the high school, working down at the auditorium and one of the locker rooms up, work through to the start of school, and the target is to have substantial completion by the start of school here at the high school. So, again, we were within that 1%. It was the schedule that tipped us towards EF Wall. So, that was our recommendation, that we go with EF Wall.
Sorry. How can we start the auditorium work for all state?
There, there is a plan that, these performances that would take place, they've all been adjusted with Kiana and other folks who usually traditionally you will use the auditorium in the spring. We've either moved the schedule up to before April break, or moved them down to UES to do performances down there for other accommodations. We have taken a former storage room and made a temporary locker room here at the high school, so that's how we're gonna be able to take out one of the locker rooms. And again, that's our planning on paper. Once we sit down with the contractor, we'll have better, they'll have better suggestions as to how we attack this.
And what's the timeframe to actually get it done?
Again, substantial completion by the start of school. I can guarantee you that we're not gonna turn the key on the start of school, and there's not gonna be a contractor wandering through, but the goal is that we can use locker rooms as locker rooms. We can use weight rooms as weight rooms. I can guarantee you that they're not gonna be, you know, we're not, they're gonna leave here on the third week of August, and we're not gonna see another contractor here. We will. But use the spaces as intended. That's the goal. Great. So with regards to this, any questions on the bid? Bid results and why we ended up where we did? So, that was our recommendation on that. With regards to the scoping of the projects, let's start at UES. UES, we were very fortunate, on all of our projects, we've kept about a 10% contingency on construction. We were fortunate at UES that through all the demo, which is always the scariest part of construction, we didn't run into any big issues out there. So we still have a pretty good chunk of contingency left to be spent out there. We're more comfortable about saying, okay, we can actually afford to do some of these things that we pulled back to get that bid in line. Right now, our landscape architect, SE Group, is working with ECI on putting features back into the playground. In another few weeks, we will have a better plan that we can actually, I've got some plans in my office, but I don't want to show them to you until we know, yes, we can afford that, yes, we can afford that. But it's looking much more to the, to the, someone who hasn't been involved with the project intimately, it's going to look like what was promised, and that's the goal here, that, you know, we may have tweaked the thing here or there, but the amphitheater will be in the project, the pla- the lower playground will have equipment, and it will be closer to what the expectation is. As well as taking into account that we will have areas that, if next year, if we aren't able to afford every piece of equipment that we want, that will have the space allocated that we can get that there, and we can end up where we intend. Here at the high school, the general scope of the project here at the high school is the auditorium, which includes improvements to the sound and lighting systems. We were able to afford, or I shouldn't say we, you, the public, was able to afford reupholstering of, or upholstering of all the seats, refinishing the ceiling, windows, draperies, some curtains, so, and a new control board for the auto, audio, at the back of the stage for sound and lights. So, that was great. New public restrooms in the lobby of, by the gym. A weight room, which is currently upstairs, back behind the basketball court, it's now gonna be on the, on the ground floor for accessibility in the back corner, with additional windows, so you can actually look outside and see whether it's raining or snowing or what, with actually a window from the gym into the weight room, so you can see people are in there, and that you've got this great new feature. And then two new locker rooms with support space for coaches and referees. We also have a new training room that'll be going in, out on the backside of the basketball court. At Union, the interior work at the, at Union, we're finishing up the vestibule now. Down there, there's a new elevator that's going in, renovation of the last two game bathrooms down there, and a new fire alarm system, and electrical work feeding from the panels to new subpanels, which is gonna be a great asset down there. Also, we bundled into this, much to Grant's chagrin, was we crossed, we crossed the streams of funding. We included in this bid number here, the work at, the capital work at Main Street Middle School, which includes two new restrooms, game restrooms down there on the, down by the gym, and then up on the third floor. Again, those are different funding, but for the economies of bidding, and we bundled looking to this bid, and Grant will do his accounting work from there. New, here at the high school, some mechanical work, air handlers, we're gonna use the same system, silicone coating system we used on the roof membrane this summer here, over on that, over the gym and auditorium here at the high school. System seems to be working well.
Does that mean the whole roof is done now?
It is, but it's a coating system. It's not a new membrane. So, I, I, it was a system that was endorsed before I got here, and, you know, the, the best way would have been to strip it all down, all the insulation off, and put a whole new membrane and, and all that. This coating system of existing membranes is something that's become in vogue, more widely acceptable in the last several years. The idea of taking a membrane that is generally in good shape, to tear it all off, to landfill it, when you can actually roll on coatings that use the existing as a substrate, has gained popularity. Northern New England and New England were generally the last to get on board with those types of things, but it's becoming more acceptable around here. So, I do not get the expect, I would not have the expectation that this is a 25, 20, 25-year roof. I think we've probably gotten 15 more years out of these roofs. That's my, that's my guess.
Do you have any idea what the cost differential is roughly?
Oh...
Doing something like that versus...
That's a lot. It's probably four times as much, especially here where the roof deck, we weren't able to fasten into it, so we truly would have had to take all the insulation off of our roofs and adhere the insulation, because we can't, we can't mechanically fasten it. So, it was a huge savings. I don't have the numbers in front of me, but multiples of what a new system would cost.
Bridgette?
Is there still gonna be the new classroom space as part of this, the high school work, the new classroom, the arts that's connected?
Yeah, oh yes, the green room, yes. There's new classroom space, green room, on the backside by the auditorium. So, we're hoping, and again, this, all these numbers came in, you know, we worked really hard with the administration and the faculty who use these spaces and what their needs are, and we really worked together to focus in on what the most important things were, and what the biggest bang for the buck was. And our hope is, just like we did with the playground, is we're gonna be, we're gonna be conservative now, such that when we get done, and we know we've got all those basics covered, that we'll have a little bit of leeway to sort of add some things back in. You know, I, I'll say, I'd love to put a few, a little bit of money into that lobby. People are gonna be coming in to spruce up that lobby for as modest as we can, to really make the experience great from, we don't want to have people come in and then get into that lobby, and then have to go to those nice spaces. But let's make sure we get those nice spaces the way we want before we start worrying about those things.
And just, so everyone knows, I participated, I represented the board on the auditorium committee, and Lisa represented us on the wellness...
Gymnasium side of things, so if you have any more questions.
Do you, what does the board think about, and it could be, it might even make sense to do it in the fall, once these projects are done, but then we're gonna have more capital projects. We created a capital fund to deal with. What do people think about a walkthrough of the Montpelier buildings one afternoon, to look at the work that's been done, and what's, because we're making decisions on, on these things regularly, and although we're not making decisions based on the aesthetics and based on our anecdotal experiences, I think it is helpful to see it. And even those of us who do have kids in the schools, they're only in certain schools, so we don't see everything. I think it could be helpful to see, well, have Andrew walk us through and say, well, these are our needs here, here, and here. These are examples of them, and this is what we've done here, here, and here, kind of thing.
We, we did have a walkthrough of the high school stuff, and it was helpful.
Great.
Yeah. So it would be nice to have one after it's done.
Libby and I discussed this, and I, I was probably a little bit more ambitious than I, than I should have been, but I would like to, in the near future, whatever that means, I would like to give you guys an annual report, your facilities, where they stand, what they're, and, and in a format such that it's not reinventing the wheel every year, it's updating the information, because...
So we could plan ahead. What a novel idea.
That'd be awesome. Thank you for your work on this.
But, let's get the things built first. I'm slowly chipping away on it, but I don't want to make any promises quite yet, until Libby tells me when to make that promise.
Well, let me know, talk about it, maybe...
But the walkthrough, I think, absolutely, absolutely.
Do you think maybe like later in the spring, when some stuff is happening?
Whenever, whenever you guys would like to do it.
When the playground thaws, and...
Or in the fall.
Or in the fall when it's done.
In the fall when it's done.
Well, maybe, but...
Yeah, because we may have an opportunity in the fall to make decisions about, you know, spare funds.
Timing-wise, none of this stuff is going away, so the issues aren't gonna change. So the more time you have to think about them, and try and prioritize those, those pieces.
And having walked through with Andrew, it's a different, it's a different experience, because he's so knowledgeable about buildings. So, you see it through different ones.
And then Libby, Libby was, went through, went through with the fire marshal, fire marshal, chief, fire chief, and police chief.
I was, Matt.
Tony, Tony can join us for that. But, yeah, absolutely, be happy to. Be happy to.
Good, we'll, we'll make sure that happens, maybe in the spring and the fall. Any further discussion on that, or can we have a motion to approve, approve the bid approval?
I move to approve the award of the contract EF Wall.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Next we have, and this is Michelle. So, Michelle and Andrew, you talked about lead. Just got a note to the board, you might want to, this is, there's a link on our, I think you sent this around, have some social media.
Yes, we'll call it a website to show.
Yeah, so they can, you know, view this, and if they want to know the information on what, if they have some, some questions, and we don't have.
So, what, we wanted to invite Michelle Thompson down here, and I'll let Michelle introduce herself, but because last time we talked, we kind of just gave an overview of where we were, and kind of what we were trying to do. From there, we started to just develop a strategy to deal with, until the legislature comes up with more specific, specifics that we can follow. We wanted to come up with a strategy that we could communicate with the public as to what we're doing to reduce lead exposure to students, and we thought it would be a great idea to share this with you guys, so as Jim was saying, you could share it with the public. And Michelle could answer any specific questions that you had, or general questions about where we are within the states and the schools, as well as what we're doing here. So I'll let Michelle introduce herself.
Sure. So I'm Michelle Thompson. I'm the Public Health Industrial Hygienist with the Health Department, and one of my capacities is environmental health work with schools. So I've been helping here with the Montpelier Roxbury School District, and their efforts to do the lead and drinking water testing.
And the radon testing.
And radon testing, yeah.
So, so as, Michelle, why don't you give a little, sort of, lead in drinking water, and sort of where standards are, and just to give us a context of where we are in the state, and, and sort of in this flux, from 15 parts per billion down to one, to now potentially three with the state, to sort of...
Sure. So, lead in drinking water is regulated in a couple different ways, depending on your building, and who served, and how many students are served, and whether it's a municipal water source or a well. So, schools that are on their own well and serve 25 or more people, they're required to do some lead testing as part of the lead and copper rule, which the Department of Environmental Conservation regulates. And municipal water systems are required to do some testing for the same, same rule. But again, it's just a portion of TAPS, and schools that are on a municipal water system are being tested inside the school, because the lead and copper rule requires testing at residences. So they're doing... So they're doing the testing in residential settings and not inside the school building. The action level that they use for those public water systems is fifteen parts per billion. It's not a health-based level, it's based on treatment effectiveness and based on economic feasibility. So that's, that's the level that they use, they require action to be taken for any TAPS that are above fifteen parts per billion. The American Academy of Pediatric and the Health Department, we have a health advisory level of one part per billion. So we would recommend that TAPS not exceed one part per billion and that is a health protective value because there is no safe level of lead in the body. And so as low as, as you can get it is what's recommended. And the reason it's not zero is because labs have different reporting limits and the Health Department lab's reporting limit is one part per billion. So basically we're saying we recommend being as low as a lab is going to report to you. They won't report anything less than one.
So we, and stop me one, one, two. So we, we got into this from a parent who had asked us about if we had done any lead testing and I said no and we asked Libby and said, let's do it. And so we did and a hundred and fifty test results later. And the, the state's coming out with their own soon, their own rules and regulations on this. Probably within the next, probably this count, probably this year, that's the guess. They've got things written, but whether it's going to be implemented or not, because there's still a lot to do. So we went through and as I say, tested about a hundred and fifty or taken about a hundred and fifty tests. And in conversations with you and the public and Libby and myself, it, we, we came to the conclusion that barring having the state tell us, you know, giving us the guidance that, and talking with Michelle, that really our best bet is let's go to the one part per billion or less. And the best place to do that after doing our testing is direct people to filtered bottle stations, which we have throughout the buildings. And that's what we have done. So every sink that potentially, every sink has a sign above it that says, one of a, one of a couple of things that says, use bottle fill stations, that's in all the classrooms, all the classrooms since they have those signs. We, you know, they're signs, they're laminated signs, so we, I've talked to the custodial staff and said, hey, if you need more, if they're not there, make sure you let us know and we'll get them up. But trying to set a culture of sending the kids to the drinking fountains. In kitchens, we have, I either tested and know that they're down to the one part per billion or less. We've put a no restrictions sign up. If we've got a fixture that is a little higher at the, at the initial draw, but is fine in the flush, we've got a purge for thirty seconds sign or we've got a, did I say the no restrictions? So the no restrictions or a purge. So that's where we are with the kitchens. In home ec rooms, we've put filters on all the home ec rooms. N S F, is that what it is?
Yes.
N S F rated filters on all the taps. Figuring you're not going to take your pot of water down to the sink, down to the bubbler to get water. And we've done that for all the nurses' offices as well. Except Roxbury where it's, they tested it below the limit. So that's generally where we are. What we've done is we've come up with this sort of strategy. This is a work in progress and until the state comes out with something a little more specific, this is what we, we are doing as a district. So we're directing all, all students and faculty to use and visitors to use the, the bottle fill stations. Any fixture that's above fifteen parts per billion, we immediately took out of service. I'm going to go show you the numbers here in a moment. Any fixture that's redundant, an old unfiltered drinking fountain that's ten feet away from a new bottle fill station, we've taken out of service. An old sink that's in a closet, and you'd be amazed at how many sinks there are in closets in this district. We just shut the water off. Again, installed filters at all the nurses' offices, installed filters at all the student cooking facilities. In the kitchens, again, we have made sure that all those have the appropriate sign as to what they can use. Ideally, we'd like to have the kitchens no restrictions. And we are working towards that, we have been, I'll talk a little bit about that, the sort of remediation steps that we've been taking. Most all sinks, we're going to implement a strategy of any fixture that is tested above one part per billion that we've taken out of use for drinking, we are going to start replacing those fixtures and valves. Really you've got to go down, if the fixture had leaded in, which our testing kind of indicates that our, our, any fixture that is a problem, it's because of the fixture, not the pipes within the building. But we've got to go down to the valves, which means we have to shut off the water in the building. Even in this building, that's a nerve-wracking thing to do, so we haven't done that U E S or Main Street because you don't mess with the plumbing when the kids are there because the valves don't get exercised. You turn them once, we could have big trouble, so we're, we're being a little bit cautious there on those, but they're on the schedule, the appropriate time to, to replace those fixtures. We're going to continue testing as, as needed and work with Michelle. We're going to continue to communicate our strategy and our goals with parents. We've got a webpage which I'm going to show you guys so you can communicate that to folks, where we're putting all this information, so folks can find it. And then the last piece is going to be, as I say, once the state comes up with their regulations, we will follow those as a minimum. The state, it appears, is going to have a three-part per billion limit for drinking water. So that will be a further discussion, but we're going to stick with the one for now. And the one piece that is a little bit, that we talked with Michelle about was lead can't get through the, you can use it for washing dishes and washing your hands.
Yep.
And so we kind of, early on, made that compromise that we really, you've got to have water. You've got to, especially in the elementary schools, the kids need to be able to wash their hands. So that's why we decided, we made the conscious decision to leave those sinks active.
And that's where the signage comes into play and just changing the, the culture around where people are used to drinking from. So if it gets in the teacher's mindset that, okay, we're not using this for drinking and cooking, we're only using this for hand washing and then that just becomes the, the norm.
And it's, and it's being on the, the front edge here, it's scary that, you know, we're putting up signs telling our users that the water's poisoned. It's not necessary, but it's, you know, it's, it's within the limits of what's allowable. So I think after a year or two or a couple of years of doing this, it's going to be, we're not going to be the only buildings, so any public building you go into is going to have signage like that in it, that's going to direct you to the drinking fountains, so. So what we've done with, any questions?
Sorry, you guys are doing amazing with this complex situation. But my, what I wonder is that the public water supply only has to meet a fifteen parts per billion standard. So how can we be held to a lower standard? If, if, do we know what the incoming water lead level is?
I would say by our flush test we would be counting too.
Um, your flush tests might be a little bit too short, thirty seconds probably doesn't get you outside of the building, but you could certainly check in with the water, whatever the water district is and see what their, their results are showing. When we did a pilot last school year with sixteen schools, we did a ten-minute flush just to answer that question and we didn't find any detection in any of those ten-minute flush samples. They were all down less than one part per billion.
They were all less than one, well, that's good.
And, and that maybe is not a good generalization across the state, but what we saw was that the water being supplied typically is okay.
I mean, the fact that some of our taps are below one isn't good, that most are below one is a good indication of the quality of Montpelier's water, but I just think we need to bear in mind that we don't know the lead level of the incoming water and it seems like a lot to ask to fix that problem if there is one.
Is there any way for incoming water to shed lead, if you will, as it comes out? Most of our fountains, for example, are less than one part per billion. Is there any cha, is there any way that the water supply coming in could be greater than that in terms of lead content?
Typically what happens is the water comes in and lead gets into the water through contact with the pipes and fixtures and solder. So it's actually, the water is acquiring lead as it flows through, not necessarily.
Unless it drops, you know, except at points where it drops sediment out of it.
Yeah.
Andrew, since the signage is so important, can we assume that all the signage is age-appropriate in each of the buildings?
They do have pictures, which was one of the things that the Health Department was pretty big on making sure was included in any signage because obviously if it's just words and it's in a, in a classroom where there's, you know, pre-K for young kids, that that would be helpful. So there's pictures of like a water bottle with the do not, you know, the no sign.
The one sign I didn't bring. Let's go, I can go get the one, I've got one in the office.
Bathroom across the hall?
Yeah, there's one in the bathroom across the hall.
And there's similar, similar ones, there's a water, water bottle, there's a cup.
I used the one that we had sent over.
Yes, hand washing.
I, and I agree that one of the things I think we should do next year is we do need to go away, I, I think we should go away from the laminated sign. I think we need to get a plaque, you know, something that's fastened to the, fastened to the cabinets or the walls or something that we, we know is going to stay, but.
I wonder if we could color code some of the ones at the elementary school level.
And that was certainly a concern that, that, that parents brought to us, is, you know, you're asking, you know, the kids to make their decision of what's right and what's, you know, is this okay for me, so absolutely.
Actually, once they're accustomed to it, they'll follow the rules, so it's just, you know, this time around, so the teachers need to say, no, you fill up your water bottle there and then they'll do it automatically.
Yeah.
I mean, in terms of actually, you just obviously can't have really good data on this, but kind of anecdotally, it seems like the places where you're asking people to fill up water are probably the places where most of the drinking was occurring from. Prior to, are, were some of the sinks that had levels below one frequently used for drinking or consumption?
Yeah, yeah, I would say so, they were, the biggest issue, and Michelle can speak to this in more detail, the biggest issues we had were faucets that were put in either in the late eighties, early nineties. When the lead logs were sort of coming in, but not quite hammer type yet. And it depends on the, the type of fixture, bubbler, so down at Roxbury, they had sinks that had bubblers on them, little side bubblers. Well, the way that's configured is the water sits in the bubbler and the packing is a little bit different. So the bubbler tested high, but the fixture didn't. So on the same sink, you get two different readings. So right now, the, the, the highest priority will be, and once we can get control of the building and I, and I would love to be able to say, hey, we can do this tomorrow, but we can't mess with the wa, we shouldn't mess with the water system, not U E S in the middle of the winter when you've got things going on. U E S, there's about four, four sinks at U E S that were part of the later addition, part of that ninety, late eighties, ninety addition. There's one sink at Roxbury, and again, you can't really tell because the sinks at Roxbury were all installed basically at the same time and four out of five of them are perfectly, are within the limits and there's one that's not. Why that one isn't, who knows? But we've been able to identify it. So on the district web, sorry.
Well, no, I was just going to say, it's a recent thing, water bottles. So before that, we had drinking fountains, people went to drinking fountains. When water bottles came in, then you, you know, stuck them under any faucet that worked, there was a change and that's been relatively recent.
Um, what is your plan for retesting to check?
So on the district webpage, if you go to the, if, if folks, you can direct folks who have questions, the, the central office page, under facilities, we have posted, this is a little different than I'm used to, so bear with me. Oh, you did. So we have, we have a couple of sections in here and we're going to, you're going to see more and more information as it goes through because we're going to have our lead information here, we're going to have asbestos notifications, this is going to be the clearinghouse for information. But under, under, right and immediately, you have all the correspondence and presentations that we've done to date for lead. And we, as well as have our strategy for the handout I just gave you. So if the public has any questions about what we're doing and how we're doing it, they can come here. What we've also put on here is we have got a live spreadsheet where folks can go in and look at the results for all the different schools and where we are with them. So. So I am, as we go through, we were, are dating, this is really tough. So the room name, the room number, the location, you know, if it's a, if it's a, this is the home ec room at our Family Consumer Science.
Family Consumer Science.
At Main Street Middle School, go back, go back to the picture of the old guy, explain that. You know, we've got southwest, we've got a sink in the southwest corner, we've got one in the southwest corner, we've got these different. And so what we have here is we have the date that the test was taken. So we have our first draw, the date of the first draw, the date of our flush test and the results. So we can see here, this was the drinking fountain, we tested fine, we don't need to test again. Again, I think the state may tell us what cycle we may want to test on. That hasn't been determined yet.
No, that hasn't been determined yet.
So here, I'm just going to pull this out, this is a sink in the, in the Family Consumer Science classroom. So we tested, first tested on, on November second, our first draw was three parts per billion. Our, our flush was less than one part per billion. On the seventh, on the January first, seventh, after having these discussions of where we are, we're this, at this time, we were still thinking the fifteen part billion, fifteen parts per billion were in good shape. On the seventh, we took that fixture offline, we shut it down because it was above the, the one. We actually, on this fixture, we actually took the screen, the filter, the aerator out of the fixture. We retested it and it came down to two parts per billion. So these remediation steps are, you know, that's, you kind of take the easy, you do the easy fixed first. Before we start replacing fixtures and valves, we took the aerator, got it down to one part or two, or two parts per billion. On the seventeenth, when we got those results back, we decided that, you know, we're going to put filters on all the, the home ec, Family Consumer Science fixtures, so we installed that. We have not retested that, that is, we've installed an N S F approved filter that has a monitor on it that will, that will blink when it says the filter needs to be changed. The custodial staff has, I loaded them up with a bunch of spare filters, so that fixture hasn't been re, we don't feel the need to retest that one.
What is the cost so far of this work?
Ballpark, a few grand.
A few grand?
We've got about.
The test kits themselves are twelve dollars apiece, so that's like if you're taking one first draw sample, it's twelve dollars. So that's like, if you're taking one first draw sample, it's twelve dollars. If you're taking a flush sample at the same tap, it would be twenty-four dollars.
So we, so yes, it's like eighteen hundred dollars in testing, the time to run them up. And then the remediation work, uh, we've replaced a bunch of fixtures. We've had the plumber come in and redo the plumbing, uh, supply lines back to kind of, it was kind of cobbled together at the high school, but we brought that back. And so three to five thousand dollars.
For a school that didn't have a huge amount of problems, or, or a district.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Those are the small districts with that.
Yeah.
So let's just stick with, so.
That's so far.
This is how, this is how we've been, we've been, uh, doing this, is sort of letting folks know when we're doing stuff, what the results are, what our next step is. And then like this, this fountain, the East Drinking Fountain in the, the lower level corridor, it was old, it was redundant, we took it out of service.
Uh, question specifically about the middle school. I've been hearing that there's not ready access to a drinking fountain in the gym or by the gym anymore.
Yeah, that one's, they've ordered a new one.
Okay.
They've ordered a new one, yeah.
Great.
So let's, let's just, so that's, that's where the information, if folks have questions, everything we're doing, when we're doing it and what the step is. The state will have its own reporting matrix here soon enough, but we can talk. So if we go through the district, I went through, and keeping in mind that we're still directing everyone to, um, to the bottle fill stations. If we, if the state came and said, three parts per billion and you decided, we as a community, whomever the decision makers are to say, three parts per billion, we can live with that, that's what we're gonna do with the district. At Roxbury, that constitutes two fixtures that we need to get in there and replace. Uh, and again, we're fortunate in that the first draw, so here's a good example. This was a classroom. One of the classrooms that we tested, the bubbler came in at nine, we took it offline. We had the bubbler, we had the plumber go in and take the bubbler off. We retested, we tested at the sink this time. So we're, we still have, we have a high reading at that sink. So we'll, that's, that fixture needs to be taken out and replaced, probably down the valve, same thing with that one. Here, again, once we were down to that one part on the flush, that really isn't gonna change. So we didn't re, we didn't retest flushes if they got, if the, the flushes were below the one part per billion, we presumed that nothing was gonna change over the coming week, so we, we kept with that. And there's no, sometimes there's no rhyme or reason. You know, we went from three parts per billion to less, to less than one part per billion. That was actually a different sink. This was the faucet aspect of that same sink. So we got two sinks down at Roxbury that we're gonna, we're gonna be replacing. And that would get us to that three-part per billion throughout the entire school. Again, if that's the standard, that's further discussion on that one. Uh, UES, again, using that three-part, we've got one down there. There's, uh, there's about three other ones that we want to, to take care of to get us down to the one part per billion. Main Street, right now, I believe that all of them are below the three. Again, we've got some that were, and then the high schools is in good shape. So that, here's another good example of the high school. So this sink, this was a brand-new fixture that tested two parts per billion. We went in, we flushed it, we took the aerator out of it, we retested it. Two months, two months later, it was down to the one part per billion. But even though it was the one part per billion, we said, you know, these tests are a snapshot in time. We're, it's, it's a cooking, it's used for cooking, let's put a filter on it and be done with it. We're not gonna, we don't want people guessing what's what, we just wanna. So I'm happy to go into more detail with people, but I think I'm probably confusing people. But the important part is that the information's there and we're dating it and, um, we're, we're heading towards the goals on that piece.
Thank you.
Great, thank you. Very helpful. Thanks for covering, Michelle.
Sure, thank you. The work that you guys are doing is really good. You know, this is all proactive and there isn't legislation right now requiring it, but it's really great to see schools taking it seriously and addressing issues.
You know, that table on the website, it's fantastic, very transparent and.
Yeah, and it's, and Mike Barry was very helpful in that anytime I make a change in there, automatically upstate, updated. So it is the latest information that we have.
Yeah, no, thank you everyone for this, it's a great thing.
In terms of a plan to articulate this to the community, what, what are we thinking there?
That's on the webpage. I'm probably just making the community know that, that it's there.
Maybe it would help if each of the principals in their letters would note that it's there in the, on the website and it's been done in each school.
A link to the website in the principal email.
That would be good, yeah.
Yeah.
Can we tweet it out too?
You can, you can tweet away.
Maybe can the district tweet it out?
Yes.
That's Mike Barry, right?
Yes.
And you can tweet it out too.
Thank you very much.
I will tweet it out, okay?
Easy for you to say.
Radon?
What's that?
Radon?
Can you talk a little bit about radon?
It's on, it's on our agenda today.
Um, so we, so we did testing, um, at all four schools for radon as well. We had some unfortunate issues with the lab that we use where samples didn't get analyzed quickly enough. So we only have about half of the results for Union, Roxbury and Main Street Middle. And then we have, I don't know, just a handful from the high school. But what we saw for the results that we do have for Union, Roxbury and Main Street is that, um, radon levels were down around background levels. So what radon levels are in outdoor air, which is perfect, so that's really good. The few results that we have from the high school are similar. There was one room that had a result that was in the area where we would recommend considering doing some follow-up testing. Um, but nothing above four pico curries per liter, which is the recommended action level for fixing a radon problem. It's definitely worth trying to get the rest of the tests done. Um, sometimes in a school, it really is just one room that has an issue. It's not necessarily building-wide. So it's good to have a full set of results and we're working on what the best plan is to go about, um, finishing that up so you guys can have a full set of results. But what we're seeing so far is looking good.
Yeah, we'll do the same thing. We'll, we'll, I'll work with Mike to, to make this, I think we should make this information a little easier for people to find and we'll start breaking these down into subcategories so they can, once we have the radon testing of lead, we'll discuss this, I guess, all the reporting stuff that, that needs to take place. Hopefully we can have there.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks. And don't be, uh, don't be shy about questions or if anyone has any questions. Michelle's been fabulous, fantastically helpful in working, getting us through this. So we're happy to, we're happy to answer as we can.
Yeah, no, we appreciate it. It's important stuff.
Thank you.
Good, thank you. So our third reading of the equity policy is up next.
Andrew has at least one. I, I do, but I think it's resolved now by the clean copy. Cause I was looking at a copy that was like two or three times ago.
And I emailed us the one that Brian and I.
Yeah, and looking at it at the beginning of this, which I, I unfortunately didn't have a chance to look at the clean version before. Uh, but I did read the, the dirty version, if you will, uh, for like the fifth or sixth time. And I just, I just wanna clarify something, but I think that this is clarified, seeing it in this format, it seems very clear. With regard to the assessment, under expectations for district administration, the language about the district will systematically gather and use data disaggregated by race, ethnicity, language, et cetera, is the intent of that so that we can collect data based on these, um, demographic fields to, uh, ensure that we're meeting our goals within the equity policy? Is that the, is that the aim of that?
Yes, I would say that was the original intention.
Because here, here it seems clear that that is it. And then there was something, I, I think there might have been something in an old one. I don't know what it was, I, I don't wanna misspeak. But there was something that threw me off and made me think that the language was doing the contrary of that. And I was concerned that if we didn't have that type of data, there wouldn't be a way for us to evaluate and hold ourselves, the district, accountable with this policy. So, but seeing it clean like this, I don't have that same concern anymore, so.
Okay, perfect. Any other considerations in the case again, Policy Committee for?
I would say, we didn't catch it before it came out this time, but there was a slight grammatical change. The second paragraph, um, the description, there is the, there's one sentence that is in italics, that the italic should be removed. Um, it, students should not bear that burden of italicized.
Sorry, Ron.
Totally mine, yeah, like I said.
I did not get anything back from the students on this, so I think that they were, I knew that's written.
Ordinarily busy.
They went out a few at a once, so. So it can be warrant for adoption, if there is.
Great, another comment?
No, except great job.
Yeah, great job.
Thank you students.
We don't have, I'm really glad the board, while the students, the board, the circle that we got, right? So they're just not here tonight, so, okay. I thought they started in the fall, but.
We used to be able to find bits of it in, dispersed in other policies, but it is.
Yeah.
Makes it better statement.
So what do we do? Do we have to approve this and then it waits ten days and then we?
We don't have to, we don't have to take a vote now, but we do have to, we seem to have consensus that we will approve it next time. So it needs to be warranted.
Yeah, to make sure that's exact.
Should it be on the consent agenda or do we just?
Yeah, I'll be on the consent agenda. Okay, so next item is, um, executive session for the evaluation of personnel, so.
There's no negotiations?
Yeah, I feel like we should probably put like.
Update on status.
Five minutes of negotiation.
Oh, you know, there's one other item I wanna add. With the change to the way the healthcare is bargained, um, there's been a deal worked out where every, uh, school district or SU district gets a vote through the VSB to approve the deal. So we need a rep, um, as part of, of that. So we need a, a VSB rep who would basically monitor, uh, you know, the talks and figure out what's going on and then vote whether or not we wanna approve that statewide healthcare agreement.
It's not, not just floor, like we have to send someone from our board, we can't just.
Yep.
So where is this occurring?
Yeah, every, every SU and school district gets one vote, part of that.
We, we get one vote to decide how the VSB votes or?
I think so.
So it's, the VSB has a vote.
We're ratifying whatever.
On the negotiating team, we're voting to tell them not to vote.
So do you have any clarity on what that means? Does that mean, as Andrew was just saying, show up at one meeting to, to, and have monitored ahead of time? Or does this show up for fifty meetings along the way?
You want me to read the request?
Yeah.
Yes, please.
Under the process approved at the two thousand eighteen VSB annual meeting, each SU slash SD has the ability to cast one vote to ratify the agreement reached by the statewide healthcare bargaining commission.
Ratify the agreement, that sounds like an after vote.
It tells, so it's instructing this board, please be sure to add appointment of the SD's voting delegate for statewide health insurance to the first meeting of your SD board as the ratification process requires each SD to notify the VSB of the name, telephone number and email address of its voting delegate by April first. If the commission enters into an agreement, the VSB will hope and host an informational webinar for the voting delegates within ten deli- ten, ten calendar days after execution of the agreement. Within ten calendar days after the informational webinar, the VSB shall conduct an electronic ballot.
So it sounds like it's pretty, it sounds like it can be a pretty light lift.
It's like they make an agreement, we watch a webinar.
And then you electronically vote.
I'll assume that.
And is it?
I'll do it.
And is it passed if the majority of people vote yes? What's the voting process?
My guess is that that is probably, we probably obtained that information, we don't have it right now.
But we will also, I would assume, have to have a board meeting after the webinar, between the webinar and the vote.
That was my question, was Andrew's desire to read this document.
I wouldn't feel comfortable with that.
Yeah, he's a representative of the board, he's not independently.
I think he has to come tell us what he learned in the webinar and then.
We could do an ad hoc, like, um, web, web-based meeting.
We could all, we could all meet somewhere and watch the webinar.
You never know, Mike, well, that's what we're doing too. No, you don't know the town, timeline on this, so.
Should we have an alternate, just like, say, for example, or we can just cross that bridge when we come to it. But say, for example, it happened to come when.
You were in Bermuda or something.
I'm away or something. I, I, I don't have any big.
Yeah, we could buy it, if you're not gonna be there, you can let us know, we can appoint it alternately at a time. I think the, the important thing right now is getting the contact information to the VSB before the April one deadline and to this meeting, the next meeting, so.
I'll do it, as the other board member on the negotiations committee who isn't a parliament, the parliamentarian and isn't on a third committee. I'll do it.
I, I move that the board appoint, uh, Andrew, sorry, voting delegate to the VSB healthcare.
I'll second that.
All's in favor? Aye, and you opposed? Great, thanks, Andrew.
You're welcome.
Thank you.
Now, executive session, and so you want us to add negotiations?
So we need a motion to enter executive session to discuss.
I, I move that we find that discussing negotiations in public would put the district at a substantial disadvantage.
Second.
All's in favor? Aye. You opposed? Now.
I move that we go into executive session for the purpose of discussing contract negotiations and evaluation of personnel.
Second.
Favor? Aye. Opposed? Great.